I call to order the May 10, 2021, business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Mr. Lindy, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Ladies and Americans, the people of our nation, we stand for the right to do what is best for us.
Thank you. Mrs. Hughes is here in the absence of Ms. Wagner. Ms. Hughes, would you please call the roll? Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers here. Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion at this time for a 48-hour waiver to amend the agenda to include the following changes. The subject of board matters will be introduced after hearing of the public. Announcements will follow board matters and will include the addition of a special announcement. Resolutions will follow announcement and will include the addition of the resolution that you have at your seat. Is there a second on the motion for a 48-hour waiver?
To move.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Hughes, roll call. Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
President Jones? Yes. Thank you. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting April 26, 2021, business meeting April 26, 2021, special meeting May 3, 2021.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes opposed? Minutes are approved as written. Okay. Hold on one second. I'm so sorry. Okay, we're at committee reports. In the absence of Ms. Bates, I'm going to ask, I was gonna ask Mr. Messer, but he left. Okay. Um, so, Ms. Bowers? Thank you.
I think that was intentional. Nevertheless, um, I have before me the report for the Health and Safety Committee on, from April 26, 2021. First item on the agenda was a report out from Mr. Glover, Mr. Kearney, who updated the committee on several issues that are in the Senate and the House. We talked about House Bill 110, that that bill is about operating appropriations for the fiscal year 2022 and 2023. The liaisons also report included, there's a link for to see the further Ohio budget information that they presented. There are several links, actually. Ohio District Creative Extended Learning Plans, State Report Card, Possible Major Changes. It was identified by Gamble Montessori's Green Ribbon Reward Award, and Cincinnati Public Schools Students Learn Life Lessons. Those things are also, their links included in the report. There were several other House bills that were presented that you'll see in the minutes that Mr. Kearney and Mr. Glover reported on. Assistant Superintendent Bunty opened in discussion about child abuse prevention. Leadership is very concerned about increased potential child abuse neglect during the statewide shutdown. Ms. Bunty reported CPS request support from Cincinnati Children's Hospital in collaboration with Hamilton County Job and Family Service. There's also a diagram about training that staff can receive and that have received and all the way up until this month where they're continuing training about mandating reporting. Let's see, Transportation, Mr. Johnson was present to present about communication and bus scheduling concerns and issues and presented possible outcomes or resolutions are resolving some of those issues. He, we talked about the multiple vendors that we, that are included in contract with us and how many trips we have per day. He also presented to us the supply and demand scale, explain about how all this works together. Mr. Johnson reported that the quality service on the time performance is to create efficient transportation operation without compromising the health and safety of students. Um, let's see. There was a lot of talk about operating procedures and things of that sort that's included in the report. He emphasized the need to recruit the right bus drivers that care about students. He also identified that because of the, because of COVID-19, there's been a high number of absent, our bus drivers not available because of the inconsistency with our school opening and closing for students to be in person. Superintendent Murphy, Murphy reported that the student groups speak up and speak out, and the Cincinnati Young Activists Coalition contacted CPS administration regarding equity concerns on how resource officer, resource, school resource officers discipling Black and Brown students. The ministry addressed the students' requests by reaching out to Ms. Nia Balki of CoHere, who also presented some of the feedback from, from the CoHere discussions with parents and students. Let me see, Mr. Messer, am I leaving anything out from Health and Safety?
No.
I don't think, I don't think so so far. Right now, the only two action items that are on, in the minutes is that Ms. Bates will recommend that the board on May 10, which is today, conversation is take place between the board and the city's appropriate committee. I think we kind of talked about that during the last board meeting though. And I'm not, I think we left that table for further discussion. But the second action was the committee agreed to accept CoHere's presentation and that the administration will provide the committee with, and the full board with an update on data that was received by the young activists on May 30. I think we received that via email. And this concludes the minutes from the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, do you have an addition, Mr. Messer? Because we're at your five minutes for your committee report. Go ahead.
I was just getting context because I know we were all copied on some messages as we went back to full-time instruction that were related to transportation. And there was an aha for me in this presentation. And that was, at the very beginning, there were days where we had over 8,000 calls coming in. So, so it felt like maybe a ball got dropped here and there in that volume of calls. And many of the calls we found out were not necessarily transportation-related, but that was a number that people had. So, two things came out of that. A, we're gonna look into stratifying when those calls come in so that we're only getting the transportation ones in there. So that was a fix. And then this idea around a parental advisory board on transportation that seemed to gain some traction. So I think we'll see some improvements, but that was a really big aha for me. I don't know, anybody could manage that number of calls in a day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're gonna move on. Ms. Bolton, Chair Finance Committee?
Thank you. On behalf of the Community Audit Committee, on which the Finance Committee from the board sits, we received a welcome from our co-chairs. And then we immediately heard a report, a follow-up regarding the benefits audit work that's being done in order to improve that. And then was presented with a timeline for that. And one action item from that was that the Audit Committee wanted to continually be informed as to the district's work on it, but also the consultants' work on it. And then Dr. Carrie Bunger was pleasant and wonderful in her presentation about Old Shore, New Shore, and what the future holds for CPS, and presented that to the Audit Committee, who seemed very interested in, in following through on the new CPS. Also, at that same time, a committee member raised the issue of, didn't seem like there was enough emphasis for parent or community engagement. And indeed, Ms. Bunger, Dr. Bunger said that was a good point, but then relayed that she did just not reported that, but it's a full part of that New Shore, Old Shore. Then there was some discussion regarding enrollment and what does it mean to have the decline in enrollment? And how does that impact us physically or financially? Unfortunately, members of the committee knew as much as anybody else as to how it does and that there's a delay regarding enrollment. The doc was lost. Also, a discussion from the committee too about when children are going to charter schools, it's even more costly for us financially. It was great, their level of interest and level of information was wonderful. Then we did, they seemed very pleased that we had passed the five-day in-person resolution and wanted to know if we have some hopes about getting our enrollment back up, which is what they want to see happen. We then had a number of audit updates from Isaac Korn and regarding licensure verification, contractor versus employee determination, and the continuous auditing, documentation of internal audit procedures, departmental staffing and expansion, and the following efforts. We are under audit all the time, and that's a matter of process. It's not necessarily a matter of need. The internal auditor then presented as from her perspective for annual evaluation and asked for input regarding that annual evaluation from the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee members are asked to complete the fiscal year 22 Audit Committee input form and to figure out sort of where they're going in the future, and that would be helpful. We then received, as we've already reported, the Finance Committee through Mr. Ashley, Kevin Ashley's efforts, the monthly financials that were reported to the Audit Committee. And again, more discussion about enrollment and what that may mean. And Audit Committee was reassured that that's really an average of over three years usually. Wanted to know how not using the October date any longer is gonna impact some of the thinking. And basically, I think it was Member Bates, as well as Member Fisher, who said that over those three years, we can soften the blow of our somewhat decline in enrollment, which happened for preschool and some of our elementaries. Of course, our high school enrollment went up. And so there was good discussion about that. And again, a great deal of information that was already there. We reported as well on the status of the transportation efforts, the believing that we might be close to being able to talk to Metro about the next year, even though they're still in labor negotiations, and some concern about moving ahead on van and yellow bus. I think it was a member of the Audit Committee reported that perhaps first student had been sold, which is our major supplier and vendor. So there was a little bit of discussion about that in the meeting adjourned. And again, we can't thank these people enough to share their expertise. Also, this past Wednesday, the Treasurer met with many members of the Audit Committee that were interested and spent several hours going over financials about the district. And she got rave reviews. Well, I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Murawski, please present Policy and Equity Committee.
My pleasure. Thank you, President Jones. Let me start my timer. All right, start now, Ms. Jones. Come. We met on April 29, 2021. It's Mr. Lindy, Ms. Bolton, and myself, with our Director of Facilities, Director of HR, General Counsel, Assistant General Counsel. If any eagle-eyed members note that it says Student Achievement Committee members at the top, that has been changed. I don't know that we got the amended, but it now says Policy and Equity Members. As always, our work plan, you know, includes this discussion of board policies that are guide administrative work and our work. So we started there with nothing great to add, except that we found it was necessary, you may recall this from the last report, that the 6,000 series, the finance policies, needed a deep dive because they're so big, there's so many. And a lot of them are duplicative or maybe out of date. And so Finance Committee has taken that on, for which we are most grateful. And the committee will look at those on May 27 for discussion at, or sorry, they'll take a look at those, and then we will discuss them on May 27, 2021, what they found in finance. So we'll come back to policy. We had a very deep discussion, you'll recall, in the last couple of minutes. Responsible bidder came up at the request of Board Member Lindy. And we have been having a lot of discussion about how can we, or can we legally tighten up and make stronger our responsible bidder language and our policies. And so I will not insult your intelligence or read you all of this, but you'll see a number of policies listed, all of which the council is taking a look at, either cleaning up, amending where they can, or doing away with entirely. If you have questions at the end, we're happy to answer those. But the bottom line is, we found they all needed updating. So, Mr. Hoing suggested, to which I know I adamantly agree, and I believe my colleagues did, and they're always welcome to correct me, but he suggested that the new diversity of equity and inclusion manager review these policies as well and be a part of that process when they are on staff. Mr. Hoing also require, or reported, there is a lot of cleanup, and we need to eliminate some references to old resolutions that may not even be pertinent anymore. So again, I just want to thank Mr. Lindy here, as I did in committee, for bringing this up because it was obvious it was time to look at these. I'm gonna skip ahead. Committee Member Bolton brought up something that I thought was very interesting, and I'd like to highlight a very interesting matter, is that in the world of equity, you know, sometimes responsible bidder language could tiptoe near inequitable language, i.e., you know, making it difficult for smaller, you know, black-owned, minority-owned firms to participate. We all agree that there is a world where CPS can walk and chug gum. At the same time, we've proven that time and time again. But we just wanted, I just wanted to bring that up. We need to be cognizant of that as we move forward so that we're not inadvertently going against our own recently adopted anti-racist policy and equity policy from the past. Board Policy 7430, which I will read a resolution tonight to amend. Ms. Bolton asked that the wording be made stronger. It's right here in your minutes. So, questions on that? You can ask now or later when I present the resolution. Other business, we had a very long discussion about out-of-district enrollment for children. And I want to read this last night, plenty of time to do so, so that's good. It's come to our attention, hearing of the public, you know, an employee in the district bringing up the fact that it was difficult to enroll his child in school, in the district. And so for clarity, Mr. Hoing shared the following information. If an employee lives in the district, they are entitled to the same priorities as any other in-district resident. The employee lives outside, the district has long allowed and encouraged employees to enroll their children in CPS. Prior to 2015, the district had a policy that required out-of-district residents to pay tuition, but CPS employees were offered the benefit to enroll free of tuition. However, the priority of where employees fell in line for enrollment has not changed. The policy has always been, if you are out-of-district employee, you have the same enrollment priorities as any other out-of-district resident. The tuition waiver in Section 700 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement has, has been the same for years, and it states the same enrollment and application procedures, including deadlines, as those applied to other non-resident pupils shall be in effect. So in 2015, CPS became open enrollment district, stopped charging tuition. So while the practice has not always been as committed to now as ensuring in-district students have priority, due to Ohio Department of Education audit finding, we have been under review and we've been stricter, that all in-district residents have first priority always. Action taken, the General Counsel will meet with the CPS teacher who lives out of the district, share the background. I suggested in an action item that will share this information for discussion with the full board, which I just did during the regular board meeting today. OPEZ, Ohio Principal Evaluation System, I'm gonna go a little over it. General Counsel is going to prepare a draft for OPEZ for us to review. Lastly, and importantly, or second to lastly, we, Ms. Stephanie Scott of General Counsel's office, the Assistant General Counsel did some research regarding mandatory vaccinations or requiring vaccinations of employees. It has been found that it has been done. The U.S. Equal Opportunity Employment Commission has released guidance recently that says employers can require COVID-19 vaccinations with just two exceptions, one disability and two religious. The religious has to be because of a deep value, not political reasons. Committee Member Bolton requested requiring the vaccine is a reasonable request. Board Member Lindy and myself, I think, agreed with this. And we, we asked that the administration draft a policy just for us to look at, to see what it looks like. Not saying we're gonna bring it to the full board, we may. But to see what a policy may look like requiring vaccination. I brought up the point that if we are going to do that, what would it look like to do the same for students? If we're going to ensure that teachers and staff have vaccination, what about students? Ms. Scott said she hadn't seen any research regarding that, so she's gonna follow up. Then lastly, out-of-district transfers, Mr. Lindy shared with committee information from a 2017 Fordham Foundation study about school districts that accept out-of-district transfers. I told, I suggested to Mr. Lindy he give it to Mr. Hoing because this was of great interest to me when I joined the board, and Mr. Hoing was most instructive to me. And I think that's happening, so I present the minutes as written. Hope for acceptance.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the committee reports. There are second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Bolton, you win the prize for the staying within the five minutes. But I will say this, in a very kiddingly manner, both of you who went over your time, they were, they were important and they needed to be said, so. Okay. Alrighty, so we have two presentations this evening. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce the first presentation.
Yes, so as I introduce this first presentation, there are two times of the school year that are my absolute favorite times of the year. The very beginning of the school year, I love because I love going into a school, we didn't have it this year, but, and smelling crayons and pencils and seeing the computers open. And so that is like one of my favorite times in the school year. The second favorite time is the end of the year, and not because school is ending, but because it is an opportunity for us to celebrate the accomplishments of our students and all of that they have been successful with the entire school year. You know, pre-K through 12th grade, we are centered around what happens after our young people leave our doors. And so tonight, I'm so excited to be able to initially introduce the presentation for the valedictorians and salvatorians. This is such a special time for our kids. And even in the midst of the pandemic, we have to celebrate them. And I'm super excited to say that these young people who will be presented by our Assistant Superintendent are well-positioned to be ready for the three E's: enlist, employ, or enroll. It's all turned over to Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. I certainly echo that sentiment you shared. And I am excited to share with you, the young people you will see before you today have decided to stay here in the city and go to the University of Cincinnati or Xavier University. Some of them have decided to spread their wings and leave the state. They've selected colleges like Belmont University in Nashville, Tennessee, East West University in Chicago, Illinois. And some of them have selected historically Black colleges and universities such as Central State. They are also very excited to share with you, they'll be majoring in a variety of subject areas, some education, very near and dear to all of us, but others are interested in biology, engineering, and psychology. And then one other tad bit of information I wanted to share with you, and this is not finalized, but I was super excited about it. As of Friday, our seniors have earned over $68 million in scholarships. And so I believe Rob is going to share the video with us. Enjoy.
Thank you. Congratulations to all our valedictorians and solid, I can't say that word, but solid valedictorians. Okay. Do board members have comments, questions or comments? Mr. Murawski?
I just want to say congratulations to all of those young people, if you're watching, or if your family members or folks you live with are watching. It's a huge accomplishment. I had to ask Ms. Bolton what some of those words meant because I joked and said I was lucky to graduate high school, and I don't know what some of those words meant under your names. And I'm real proud of you, and good luck, and you know, stay in touch. And I'm happy to see so many of y'all sticking around here to help make our city better. So, thanks for what you gave to the district. Hopefully, we gave you half as much back.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes. Often, when they're here, we get to see them, it's, it's just, it is the best night of the board year, if you will. But we also usually ask the parents to stand up and applaud the parents. And I think we ought to do that tonight too, whether they're here or not. The parents and their neighbors and their friends and all the folks in their family and extended family that have helped them through. And I think they deserve an extra badge, if you will, somehow, to have made it through their senior year this year, knowing what happened last March. They've got it, what it takes. So they need it to move in, and they've got the grit. They'll be successful.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I would like to also say what Superintendent had mentioned about the excitement. I'm already cheering up, and I'm not even, I don't even have graduates. But this time of year just makes me very excited, just knowing about the opportunities all of our graduates have before them. I'm excited, the hard work that they put in, especially during the COVID-19. They've been able to stay. been able to stay on track. And of course, applying the support systems that they have, their families and whom was able to keep them on track. And that distinguished scholar was new to me too, Mike, up under Walnut Hills, and whom Lottie was not, but distinguished scholar was new to me. So I, but I like, I like the uniqueness of that. So congratulations again to our salutatorians and our valedictorians, as well as their families.
Thank you. Mr. Masser?
Yes, I just want to give a shout out to the, the teachers and every staff member who also went above and beyond during this crazy year to get these students where they are. And as amazing as, you know, that, that list is, there's a whole line of teachers that got them there and the people that served them their lunch and the people that cleaned up after them. So kudos to all of our staff at CPS for making this graduation possible.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to echo something that I heard my colleagues say that, you know, our, our city, our country and our world needs you and your leadership and your ideas for what's going to happen to make this world a better place next. And I'm excited to see what you do with the next 20 years of your career. And wanted to also just echo the thank you and the congratulations to parents who I think are watching this milestone and wish all of you the very best and say thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was great. It always, that, that is one of the, the most fun times that we had is when we're able to see the students. And so we're looking forward to this group of young people being quite successful and looking for the next class. And maybe we'll be fortunate enough to be able to have it here. So alrighty, Superintendent, our next presentation.
Yes, so in keeping with the theme of a real focus on academic achievement, we have, because of the pandemic, had to really focus on health and safety. I am proposing tonight a deviation from our usual safety, health and safety presentation. And so what you have before you is the actual presentation that gives you the numbers in terms of where we are. And I'm going to ask Sarah Trimble Oliver to come up and just highlight a couple of numbers. But of course, health and safety is really important, but it's not our major core business. And so we're trying to laser-like focus, bring attention to the academic components. And so my proposal is unless there's a significant change in the data for the district or for the community that we provide this report for you, answer any questions that you may have and really focus on the academic components of the district. So Sarah?
Yes, thank you. So as the superintendent mentioned, we, it was not our intention to go through slide by slide tonight. The overall message is that we don't have any significant changes in our school measures, nor our community measures. For example, in-school transmissions are at 83 and implementation of safety protocols at 96%. And certificated and civil service attendance are at 89 and 87% respectively. And just to give you an idea, our community daily one per 100,000 is at 13.0. So no major changes. And so it is our intention going forward that we would be able to provide you these updates in, via hard copies, as well as we post these on our district website weekly, every single week. And so if there, unless there are significant changes or updates in the landscape, we would like to provide them that way. And that concludes the presentation.
So probably people saw the good news this afternoon that the FDA has approved above 12. I know a certain 13-year-old in our family is stoked about that. So just wondering if there's been some thought to how we communicate, and obviously it just happened, but knowing that it was kind of coming, is that something that we can help communicate and/or even make available to our staff?
Yes, and here's Ms. Bunkey.
I mean, to our students, sorry, in the days and weeks ahead. Thanks.
Hi, so we were involved in conversations this very day, both with Children's Hospital and Cincinnati Health Department to make sure that we have vaccinations on our campuses before school is out. So stay tuned for more details about that, but we are very excited to be able to offer that opportunity.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Alrighty, we are now at the item on our agenda, we're hearing the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has granted, has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with the board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. I believe we have 14. Thank you.
Yes, our first speaker tonight is Kayla Reedy, followed by Elena Thompson. Go ahead, Ms. Reedy.
Hi, my name is Kayla Reedy. I'm a senior at Walnut and actor of Young Activist Coalition. At the end of the last board meeting, board member Bolton said that we are being misleading about the current status of restorative and transformative justice in CPS, and I wanted to take some time to address those concerns today. CPS's current method of restorative justice consists of alternative learning communities and PBIS. PBIS is implemented in a different way in every CPS school and in most cases, it's completely ineffective at providing any type of restorative justice. Alternative learning communities are a glorified in-school suspension. Students are still punished and taken out of the classroom. The only differences are that the students are allowed to make up their schoolwork and the students talk a little bit about what, what they should have done differently. Even if these methods were effective restorative justice, this still does not address YAC's demands. The reality is that black students are still five times more likely than white students to face exclusionary discipline. We are demanding the complete removal of all punitive discipline and zero tolerance policies and their replacement with restorative and transformative justice. It is not possible for punitive discipline and zero tolerance policies and restorative and transformative justice to coexist as the two systems are diametrically opposed. YAC is demanding the complete end of punitive discipline and zero tolerance policies and their replacement with true restorative and transformative justice, the hiring of more mental health staff and support, and the removal of all SROs from CPS. Thank you.
This is Elena Thompson, followed by Allison Goodman, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Hello, my name is Elena Thompson. I'm an attorney at the ACLU of Ohio. I'm asking you today to conduct an investigation of CPS discipline practices and discontinue those that disproportionately affect black children. I mentioned to you two weeks ago that our data clearly and unequivocally shows that black children in CPS are disciplined five times more frequently and more severely than white students, that the vast majority of students, or vast majority of incidents can be handled by teachers or administrators without removing children from the classroom or marking their disciplinary record forever, and that the contract with the police gives complete control to CPD and renders this district powerless to know about or enforce what police do in its schools. We collected data from both CPS and the police and we cross-checked every one of those data points with information that this district reported to the United States Department of Education. It's an uncomfortable truth, but this data is representative of the discipline happening to students in this district. And yet, when we brought this data to you, many, if not all of you, claim that you had never seen it, and I don't doubt that. The issue that I'm getting at here, how can you have faith in a discipline system that you don't know anything about? How can you assert that it's working when you don't see any of the records? And how can you claim that these policies aren't racially disparate when a decade of data that you provided to the federal government says otherwise? I want to be clear, we want to collaborate with you to fix this. We just need you to meet us in the middle and protect the students that you were elected to serve. What we're asking for is much broader than removing police than schools, police from schools. We're asking for reform in the way that teachers and administrators act with students, the pattern of removing kids from classrooms for minor actions, the lack of transparency in data, the way that restorative justice can be expanded, and yes, the removal of police, but focusing on that one bucket misses the point of our advocacy entirely. We're asking you to look at the big picture and you can start with an investigation of CPS practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Goodman, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by Cora Friend. Go ahead, Ms. Goodman.
My name is Allison Goodman. I am going to speak on a positive topic on behalf of the School for Creative and Performing Arts. My daughter is a seventh grader there and I would like to say that they put on a magnificent performance last weekend of School House Rock Live Junior. It had a limited audience, they handled that very, very well through their box office and the students who performed, as well as all the students who worked incredibly hard on the set, on the costumes, on the lights, on the filming, on creating the set, all kinds of student participation went into putting on that show. So I would like to give kudos to them. I would also like to say that I am very, very optimistic that live audiences will be able to return for all performances across the district. And hopefully SCPA showed that individual schools do have the ability to do that safely and this fall, that will be an opportunity for, if not sooner, for all schools to show that they can also handle that. So thank you for taking, for the time and kudos to SCPA.
Speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Cora Friend, followed by Eliza O'Keefe. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, can you see me? Hi, I'm Amy Ruth DeBono. I'm a junior at Walnut Hills High School and I'm here today again with, with the Young Activist Coalition to talk to you about the police officers in our schools and the racist discipline system. As the data has shown, the discipline disparities between black and white students and students of color in our schools are horrific. There's no saying that those facts aren't true, and the question is how do we fix it? Restorative and transformative justice is, is a way that we can teach students how to prevent these situations from occurring. We can get to the root of problems and teach students how to solve problems themselves and give them de-escalation skills and, and use things like retort, restorative talking. CPS already has some restorative practices, but they are not enough and they are not possible with the, to coexist with police officers in our schools. They're criminalizing our students and taking away the opportunities for students to grow and learn, which is what this purpose of schools is supposed to be in the first place. Although some students may have positive interactions with the police and there are many SROs who do great things as a people, such as giving college tours, this, these are jobs that do not have to be performed by police. It is not necessary to have police in our schools policing children when these children should be, being given the opportunity to learn and grow and become the people that they can be and have futures, which are being threatened by having discipline put on their record or being entered into the criminal justice system for things that are normal childhood behavior and things that I think most kids do in school and don't need to be turned into something that can affect their lives in such a negative way as it can.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cora Friend, followed by Eliza O'Keefe, followed by Yusuf Manir. Go ahead, Ms. Friend.
Hi, my name is Cora Friend. I'm in fifth grade at Fairview. And today I was at a rally with the Young Activist Coalition outside of the school board to demand that cops are removed from schools. School, um, the, the officers in schools arrest two students every day and that is unacceptable. We are demanding that you remove SROs from schools and replace them with mental health professionals that care for students' futures. Thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Is Eliza O'Keefe, followed by Yusuf Manir, followed by Catherine Swift. Go ahead, Ms. O'Keefe.
Okay, hello, can you see me? Am I, am I audible?
Go ahead.
Okay, hello, my name is Eliza. I'm a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School and I'm calling to demand the Cincinnati Police Department out of our schools. I was unfortunately not at the rally today, however, the organization I'm involved with, Young Activist Coalition, was also a few weeks ago protesting CPS's involvement with the Cincinnati Police Department outside the school board building, after which some school board members seemed more incensed by the mild inconvenience to them than by the fact that an average two CPS students are arrested every day and black students specifically are disciplined at five times the rate of white students. This racial gap in implementation of discipline is twice as large as that in, for example, Columbus. It's absurd, it's absurd that being temporarily forced to use another entrance raises more anger in certain school board members than the fact that this is what's happening in the schools under their jurisdiction. Daily student arrests are unacceptable. Criminalizing students, which is explicitly or not, the effect of such a consistent police presence on kids is unacceptable. So I'm calling once again to demand that CPS terminate their contract with the Cincinnati Police Department and that they implement restorative and transformative justice policies which do not punish students at racially disproportionate rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yusuf Manir, followed by Catherine Swift, followed by Carrie Kinkle. Go ahead, Mr. Manir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, yes.
You want to know who I am? My name is Yusuf. I'm the president of Young Activist Coalition. I've been showing up for a year straight, almost a year straight now, more consistently than any adults or other students that you claim are so very invested in, in helping our schools become better. And I'm here to talk again about what we've been talking about for the past year. According to the ACLU, the minimum recommended ratio of counselors to students that schools should have is one per 250 students. The national average is one per 444 students. The CPS ratio though, is one per 1,376 students as of the 2017, 2018 school year. The minimum recommended ratio for social workers is one to 250 students. The national average is one to 936 students. The CPS ratio as of 2017, the 2017, 2018 school year is one to 2,908 students. CPS is clearly lacking severely in providing the mental health supports that students not only deserve, but require, and that's a minimum. However, these ratios don't accurately capture just how bad the lack of student resources truly is because these resources, scarce as they already are, are not distributed proportionately, with some schools having significantly more than others. Instead of providing the resources that students need though, the district resorts to punishment and criminalization and harming kids. Punishment that comes in the forms of suspensions, in-school suspensions, expulsions, and twice a day, arrests. All of these punishments are not only disproportionately targeting black and brown children, but they're designed to do so. They're designed to target the black and brown, black and brown children that you are responsible for, that you claim to care so much about. CPS does not have restorative and transformative justice practices that have changed this very simple fact that black and brown students are still.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Swift, followed by Carrie Kinkle, followed by Anita Parrish. Go ahead, Ms. Swift.
Hello, my name is Catherine Swift and I'm a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School.
Hello, my name is Catherine Swift and I'm a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School. I am a member of Young Activist Coalition and today I'm calling in to support YAC's demands that CPS completely cut ties with CPD and removes SROs from our school, as well as implements well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative, restorative justice within our schools, which includes hiring more counselors, psychologists, and social workers for students. Studies have shown that an increase in counselors, social workers, and psychologists are effective at producing improved attendance rates, better academic achievement, and higher graduation rates, as well as lower rates of suspension, expulsion, and other disciplinary incidents. Meanwhile, currently there are an average of 270 student arrests per school year, meaning that nearly two students are arrested per day. To truly keep students safe, we need SROs out of our schools and they need to be replaced with counselors, psychologists, and social workers who will truly take care of our students' needs. Thank you.
Speaker is Carrie Kinkle, followed by Danita Parrish, followed by Owen Durico. Go ahead, Ms. Kinkle.
Thanks always for having me. I always have a public service to be heard. I had a couple of questions or comments. I did hear that there was speak of policy of what mandate for a vaccine might be. So I wanted to hear about that, which is why I tuned in today. I understand that in Utah, the governor is okay with issuing the mandate for masks for their forthcoming fall year, and I just wondered how that might look for CPS as, you know, as a policy. So obviously, it seems that those, those questions are in the works with you all, but I would, would admire a little more clarity on that. Second thing, you were finally talking about outdoor education as a policy as something that might be sort of tied into curriculum forever, which I think would be incredible and I've been asking about since July, especially regarding, because of the pandemic, as far as learning outside and the safety in guarding that mindset of the building. But I wanted to know, what is that going to look like? Because I was asking two teachers that I really admire and one of whom has a background in outdoor education at one of my children's school about that and what their needs might be and asking some of the other teachers, how could they utilize the spaces that we have specific to our school, which of course, you know, we have 60-some schools. But as a board, what are you all doing as far as further movement on this? Because each school has its own unique needs, so are monies going to be delivered to those schools? Will schools like for us, will we need to do some fundraising? Do we rely on our foundation to try to get the ball rolling so that we do have some spaces for the forthcoming school year? So I wanted to know about that and forgive me if I don't know how those monies would be allocated or what those were, if there was some talk of that, but I would, I would like to know some more information regarding that. And then also I've heard talk about this sort of the student-driven motivations and having these voices at the table and I'm still not seeing a trickle down of that. And I love that that was a presentation that was done, I think, I feel like it was around three months ago. I'm a real big push for that, but I'm not seeing that even still.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danita Parrish, followed by Owen Durico, followed by Joanne Poth. Go ahead, Ms. Parrish.
Hello, I'm a parent of two CPS students and I am here to ask the school district to take a broad look at school discipline, safety, and health and wellbeing for students. I'm asking the school district to take a look and create an evidence-based, data-driven, equitable solutions to address school safety, health, and wellbeing for students. I feel confident that if CPS does that, that SROs will not be playing the role that they play in CPS schools right now. The SRO program started in the 1960s in a very different time and has not been looked at since then in a close and systematic way. But the issue is broader than just the SROs. The issue is about school safety, discipline, health, and wellbeing for students. So I asked the district to not base the review on the status quo or look for solutions in terms of the status quo, but say, we want to serve the student body that we have today with the information and the commitments to evidence-based and data-driven decision-making and the commitment to equity and excellence in education that we have today. That's what I asked the board to do. I trust that you can do that and I hope that you will do that. Thank you.
Is Owen Durico, followed by Joanne Poth. Go ahead, Mr. Durico.
Thank you. Hello, board. My name is Owen Durico. I'm a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School and I am the vice president and speaking on behalf of the Young Activists Coalition. Today, I'd actually like to briefly take a look back, back at the last meeting that this board held. To refresh everyone's memories, it was at that meeting that our organization prevented the board from entering through the front doors of the school building, an insurmountable inconvenience and source of distress for some. But if anyone watching this thinks back, you may not remember the board having actually addressed this or our demands or data at that meeting. And you would be right, kind of. You might not have seen it, but the board did actually address our data and our demands as the last item on the agenda near the very end of the meeting. And I wish I could say that this made me feel as if we were being heard, but it doesn't. Instead of choosing to address with any substance the very real facts that we have presented time and time again for nearly a year now, or to present any idea of what might actually be done about it in a tangible way, the board chose to attempt to discredit us and our data, data received directly from the Civil Rights Data Collection and the Cincinnati Police Department. The verifiability of that data is not, is not disputable. This was incredibly disappointing. Is this the attitude that any elected official should have when presented with evidence of broad misallocation of discipline under their discipline, under their jurisdiction? The defensive response on display here was incredibly disheartening and representative of an organization that is more interested in their own image than the actual safety of their students. I urge anyone watching this to take a stand against this misallocation of discipline and this broad and this incredibly broad refusal to actually address the issues that are being raised. Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Joanne Poth. Go ahead, Ms. Poth.
Hi, my name's Joanne Poth. I am calling in regard. Late start time, I feel like there was a lack of communication in regards to this as I've had a previous student there and a current student there. I think it needs to be re-reviewed as regards to transportation and safety issues for students coming home, as well as sporting events, students working, and other siblings that would be involved and affected by a even later start time than it currently is. As Woodward is already a nine o'clock start time, making it later makes things more difficult for parents in the evening. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, so we did amend the agenda to bring forward the board matters subjects and Ms. Bolton, you have both of them, so if you want to start with the role of board committees in May and June regarding development of a district budget?
Yes, I will remind board members that the treasurer mentioned in her last oral report, if you will, that we have our board, board standing committees, which are finance and policy and student achievement and health and safety, have two meetings yet before the budget has to be adopted and that it would be helpful to her and those formulating the budgets if indeed through committee work, there could be any kind of a consensus or some sort of dialogue or some sort of recommendation that could help inform the overall budget and it would be within those committees jurisdiction. And there, we will have, all the committees will have two meetings prior to the adoption of the budget. So I wanted to remind people on her behalf and also as finance chair that that would be helpful. And then the other one that I think is on here is just an inquiry, well, it's an inquiry, but it's also an update regarding transportation. I know that we, for a number of months, have, you know, been in need of finding ways to extend or revisit the contracts for our vans and our yellow buses and also for Metro. And I'm sure there's some updates there, but one of the interesting things is that one of the, we're kind of prepared, as we've said before, to move ahead with RFPs or RFIs, whichever it is regarding fuel, and that's, I believe, happening. But the Metro contract that we have, we have probably enough information for that, considering we know how many high schoolers or what have you, but we're still waiting on state action as to tell us whether or not we're allowed to do seventh and eighth grade students on Metro. And then also for Metro, they are in labor negotiations as well, although they too, like us, old shore, new shore, are deep in the throes of a redesign of Metro. So there is a lot of, I won't say confusion, but still no super decisions yet with among or between the partners. But the biggest issue is that, and maybe we can see if this impacts us, my understanding from the audit committee members, that first student, as I mentioned earlier, our largest vendor, has been purchased by another company. And interesting to know how that will impact. So we still have our biggest, one of our biggest operations and need for moving ahead. We cannot do necessarily a full reissuance or new issuance of our contracts, but we are encouraging the board to keep at the front of their minds and concerns and interests where we are on that operation. And a lot of things are up for grabs. The other pieces that the, as we've said before, the Hamilton County Educational Service Center is also now a party to some of the planning regarding transportation and even negotiating, if you will, regarding charters and private schools. And that's part of some legislation that probably will be passed as well. And finally, the charters and other schools may not have to tell us really what they need as late as, until August 1st. So again, in fairness to one of the toughest operations, whether it's customer service that was mentioned by Mr. Messer, out of health and safety, or whether it's finance, or whether it's our community engagement, and whether it's our commitment to make sure that our children and their families are, make sure their families are not being charged for the transportation. It's a huge decision that has to be one of the primary concerns of the budget as we move forward, let alone the need that we have had for four years at least, which is not enough buses, not enough drivers, not enough routes. So all of those things, we've got to find a way to systematically in a comprehensive way, help the administration figure this out. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bolton actually took care of both items, so at this time, do board members have questions or comments about either of those topics? I just want to say, Ms. Bolton, I don't want to make an assignment for this, but it would be helpful in the first item, please remind the other committee chairs so whether we can make sure that it gets on their agenda if they need to discuss the budget piece?
Great. Thank you. We'll do it.
Not that I think people, I mean, I just think with better coordination, we, you know, we can approach it from all the committee efforts.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else then? Any other comments? Okay. Great. Does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I was fortunate last week to attend the Growing Well Advisory Board that is part of the Interact for Health and also is kind of the, the leading edge, if you will, for all of the school-based health centers that we have, which is now extending well beyond our region. But one of the, they do a tremendous data collection and even during this COVID time, they have done a remarkable job. But one thing I want to point out to the board is that, and this is, this is fascinating, as rough as the COVID time has been, in the district, according to Growing Well, our immunization of our children was higher than it has been in previous years, in the 90-some percent range. So those folks in the midst of COVID, talk about health and safety, were able to continue the immunization program. And more particularly because many of the school-based health centers, vision centers, and dental centers were open, I'll give you a statistic that is interesting out of Roberts. Prior to COVID year, which we've all lived through, about 17% of the children, the students that go to Roberts, also had their families attending the school-based health centers for services. Through the COVID year, that 17% of those students has now risen to where 59% of the students that attend Roberts have had family members also attend the school-based health center. So when we talk about family engagement and family involvement and health and safety and the commitments to our schools, I thought those were astounding data points for us to concentrate on as we move towards this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for making that comment because oftentimes, we don't share enough about what's really going on. So I appreciate that you shared that bit of information and data. Mr. Messer, followed by Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones. I have two. One I'm going to send to Vera Brooks and her team with Early Childhood. And, you know, I think it goes without saying that they've done incredible work growing our preschool program. But I've also seen personally in trying to help a friend navigate some complexities of a child who has kind of been abandoned, et cetera. And then hearing other stories, they go above and beyond to do whatever it takes to find the resources for our kids to not only get in, to get enrolled, but to get actively connected to all the services. And I was, all I did was ask a question and it was like, boom, we could do this, 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 and this. And I've heard that story repeat itself, but it just recently happened to a friend of mine who's trying to navigate the waters, her granddaughter that she's now responsible, excuse me, responsible for. So kudos to that team for doing so many things other than enrolling kids into preschool to get them in our doors and taken care of. And then the second one is, I know the dates are a little fuzzy, but it's, it was either last Monday or this Monday, is officially Bus Driver Appreciation Day in the state of Ohio. And, you know, as a kid who rode the bus an hour to and from school every day, those people were constants in our lives. It was Mr. Liggett and then Mr. Liggett Jr., who carried me all through my career. And, you know, we're trusting that group with the lives of our children every day and they're very important. That being said, we need more of them. And I want to give a number to anybody listening where you can apply, and there is a nice, beautiful billboard on 75, if you've seen it, looking for good drivers. It's 513-419-3222. You know, we need more of these. Some of the issues that we've had in the past is that we just had driver shortages and so we're trying to fill that pool, but also just to make sure that those drivers know how much they are appreciated for all they do for our children.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. I'd like to give a shout out to a few people, starting with a young woman named Lily Meyer. She's a student at Dater Montessori, which she's like second or third grade, if it wasn't Montessori translated to, you know, grade-wise. And she sent me a note and a lollipop to come see her class. I went and I got a tour of the school and I've also been Frederick Douglass in the past few weeks and I just want to give a kudos to our administration, our principals, our teachers, Sarah Trumbull Oliver, who's updated us every meeting for the past year plus. Seeing what is going on in our schools is extremely reassuring. I would like to really thank young woman Lily for inviting me to come in. They had some good questions. One of the questions that they asked me was, do people listen to you? I was like, well, it depends. They asked really good questions. But my takeaway, what I wanted to share, I think, with everybody is that I was duly impressed. And not only that, but, you know, with the kids, how they're handling. And not only that, but, you know, with the kids, how they're handling it. Because it was odd, I will say, for this forty-some-year-old to be in a school building and see it look the way it did, because it's certainly not what anything I'm used to. So kudos, Ms. Trimble Oliver, everybody, and to all the faculty and staff of the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any others? Okay. So we did do a waiver to add a special announcement. So I'm gonna, at this point, turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, President Jones. You know, when I became the superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools in 2017, our first day of the schools unveiling was Destination Cincinnati Public. And that was before we even had our strategic plan. And it was at my school, SCPA. And this vision for CPS included talented employees, brilliant students, and a district where families were choosing to enroll their kids in our district. You recall, we were the fastest-growing urban district in the state, growing about four hundred kids per year. Our journey saw great success in terms of raising student achievement, increasing enrollment, and opening new schools. If you think about the number of new schools we've opened in the last five years, it is incredible. And we've also strengthened our partnership. And then there is the unforeseen disruption, a global pandemic that we could have never foreseen or planned for. And to say it was a bumpy ride is an understatement. The work that our staff and our parents and community did to really support our kids is unbelievable. We not only weathered the storm, but we are poised to continue our journey with more resolve and a battle-tested solid foundation with a clear vision. Hope is on the way. It is on the horizon through our refreshed strategic plan. And the new school year is full of possibilities in our sight. But with every odyssey, every long and complicated journey, there's a quest for a goal, and there are seasons for awakening. And we are at that moment. And as we leave the old shore, which has been mentioned quite a few times this evening, the education during the pandemic, and honestly, pre-pandemic, and we look to a new coast, a new shore of limitless opportunities for Cincinnati Public Schools, it is time for transition. So tonight, I am announcing publicly that I am resigning as the superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools to embrace an opportunity that aligns with what I feel is an awakened calling in this season of my life. My last day will be June the 11th. What is really amazing, quite honestly, is that I'm getting actually through almost all of this without shedding a tear, which happened earlier this year, or I should say, this day. Because after twenty-seven years in Cincinnati Public Schools, many, many years as the deputy superintendent, and the last four years as a superintendent, this was not an easy decision. From Bon Hill Elementary, where I still remember my kindergarten teacher, Ms. Vanderpoel, and the teacher who taught me how to read, to SCPA graduates, I have literally spent an entire lifetime in this district. So while not my final destination, as we continue, as you continue on this journey for Cincinnati Public Schools, please know that I will always call and consider Cincinnati Public Schools my home and my district.
Well, I have to say, we got to move forward on the agenda. I know board members want to respond, and I too will respond as part of that. As we stated earlier in the meeting, we did amend the agenda so that we could kind of help this flow while people are absorbing what our superintendent is saying to us. So why don't we first start by introducing the resolution for board consideration regarding the superintendent's announcement? So I'm going to ask board members to help and share in this. And we're going to start with Ms. Bowers.
Cincinnati Public Schools has a resolution accepting the resignation of Superintendent Laura Mitchell. Whereas Cincinnati Public Schools Superintendent Laura Mitchell has informed the Board of Education of her intention to resign her employment effective June 11, 2021, to pursue another opportunity.
And whereas Ms. Mitchell is a product of Cincinnati Public Schools having attended Bon Hill Academy and graduated from CPS's School for the Creative and Performing Arts.
Whereas Ms. Mitchell started her career teaching at Cincinnati Public Schools, teaching at Central Fairmont School for five years, before becoming principal of Westwood School. In 2002, Ms. Mitchell was honored with a Millikan Educator Award, a national prize that targets early-to-mid-career education professors, professionals, for their already impressive achievements and for the promise of what they will accomplish in the future.
Whereas Ms. Mitchell was promoted to CPS's administration serving as deputy superintendent and chief academic officer from 2005 to 2017. Ms. Mitchell led the implementation of major academic improvement strategies, such as the Elementary Initiative, which raised achievements in CPS's lowest-performing elementary schools. Ms. Mitchell also led CPS's My Tomorrow Project to focus on preparing students for college and careers.
Whereas the Board of Education appointed Ms. Mitchell as superintendent in 2017. During her four-year tenure, CPS's enrollment has continued to grow, and the district has opened several new schools. Ms. Mitchell led the Vision 2020 Initiative to strengthen CPS's neighborhood schools with magnet-like program offerings. Ms. Mitchell launched the district's Community Design Strategic Plan, which sets ambitious goals related to equity, engagement, and excellence.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts Ms. Mitchell's resignation, thanks her for her service, and wishes her success in her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education presently intends to name an interim superintendent by May 24, 2021, and will soon announce a timeline and plan to select Ms. Mitchell's successor. I submit this resolution for board consideration and recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I do first want to make a statement and then ask the board members, please, if you should desire. As president of the Cincinnati Board of Education, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that the superintendent, in fact, just did announce her resignation, and we have acted on that resolution tonight. But it is not without deep sadness and gratitude for the lifelong service that you have given to this district superintendent. I can say with full transparency that while this took us all by surprise and was unexpected, I understand deeply the pull and the deference that one must yield to when they embrace their calling. I'm sure that I speak for the board in wishing you the best in your new path. While we respect your decision to keep your new opportunity private for now, we anticipate our paths crossing again. The board will begin the necessary steps to ensure an orderly transition to select and appoint an interim superintendent after Ms. Mitchell's final day, June 11. To maintain minimal disruption to the day-to-day operations, the interim will be named by the May 24 board meeting. We will also begin a transparent and inclusive national search process for a new superintendent, and a timeline for steps forward is forthcoming. So as I close, I just had to add this from a personal perspective. Superintendent Mitchell, I am personally honored to sit at this table with you as our district leadership. I have learned a lot from you. And one thing that I will say is that you are a woman of strong character and grit and tenacity, and I appreciate that about you. And I wish you well. So, board members. Ms. Bowers?
I want to call you Laura now. I used to call you superintendent. Though this is sombering news, I would like to say thank you to Superintendent Laura Mitchell. As a parent, I thank you for your compassion. As a partner, I thank you for your collaboration. As a board member, I thank you for your steady leadership, commitment to moving our district forward, maintaining Cincinnati Public School as a trailblazer in the state of Ohio. For this, I thank you, and I wish you well in your endeavor.
Mr. Messer?
Since I joined the board, over three years ago, there's not been a day that I have not been so proud to call you our superintendent. And, you know, while I didn't come from the education world, I did come from a world at Johnson &amp; Johnson, where I worked with some of the best leaders. And you are top of the top of anyone I've ever worked with. You know, I think, I remember we were joking at the time of talking about contracts. As you may remember, I was hoping for an eighteen-year agreement with Rockco having just been born, because I just feel that you have done so much to set this district up for success. And you have absolutely everything to be proud of. You know, personally, you know, I think, you know, while it's emotional to see somebody move on, the magic happens when somebody like you leaves, because you have set this district on such a foundation that I look across at these people sitting, and I have so much confidence in each of them and what they're going to do based on what you've set up as the foundation for their success. And I know that they are going to carry on your legacy and make you proud. And we're going to do the same here at the board. So thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. Superintendent, I wanted to also thank you for your career of service at Cincinnati Public. And I wanted to mention two specific things that I have appreciated about working with you. The first comes from our very first meeting together after the election. I'm not sure if you remember this meeting, but I remember very clearly two things you said to me in that meeting. The first one was that you're in this work because you believe education is a social justice issue. And the second thing you said is, I refuse to accept that we can't change a big history. And I believe so strongly in both of those. And it made me grateful from time equals zero to be working with you. And I continue to feel incredibly grateful for you and for your staff. The second is, I wanted to thank you for your leadership during the pandemic. If you had to picture the icon of steady hand, sense of optimism in the face of challenges, leadership, I do think that's our superintendent. And you, you know, delivered on a year that was safe and responsive to the needs of families and what we were learning in real time about this disease. And I'm hard-pressed to imagine a greater challenge ever. And so I want to say thank you and send my very best wishes on your next chapter.
Mr. Morosky?
Well, Superintendent Mitchell, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you. I often am in awe of what we have been able to accomplish under your leadership. And I think I've said to you a dozen times or more, just in the past year, probably five dozen times the past few years, when we've been walking to meetings or whatever it might be, that I can't imagine the kind of stress that you've been under. And you always, it's always humble. The response is always humble. And you may not like me sharing this, but I'm going to, because I know it might be personal, but it's always, your thought is always on your team, and it's always on the people that you share that burden with. And I say, well, it's hard on everybody. It's hard on you guys. I'm like, I always try to stop you saying, it's not the same. It's, I can't imagine. We have opened few schools. We've taken on a school. We've built new stadiums. We've gone up against the most powerful people in this entire city and gotten more for kids than just about any board that's gone before us. And your resoluteness, which a lot of people have already talked about, it's a big part of that. The only thing I want to add that might be a different perspective that I don't think I share enough, or ever maybe so, I'm going to now, is your reputation in the community. I think you know what I do for a living out there, and I work with a lot of our partners that work with the district just in a different way out there in my job, job. Your reputation in the community is so good. And the public sort of government, government space in which I work for a living, the same cannot be said about a lot of administrators in this public space. And in fact, I would say none. And I'm not disparaging anybody. I wouldn't do that. But it's just, it's pretty a radical thing, I think, to have a public administrator be as well-regarded in so many different sectors. That speaks a lot to your character. So wherever you're going, I'm so happy, I'm so happy for you. And they are lucky. So thanks for everything you taught me. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I appreciate that you gave us the warning that you gave us so that we could absorb this over a few weeks, because this has been hard to absorb. But as long as I've been on the board, which is thirteen or fourteen years now, you have either been the deputy or the superintendent. So if there is one person who has gotten us where we are, from where we came, it is you. And you have positioned us to be able to move on. That's the sign of a true leader, is that you have positioned us all the way back to the Elementary Initiative. I remember clearly, because I was president of the board, we sat in your office. It was going to be very demanding, very controversial. And of course, Ms. Blackwell and Ms. Ronan, whom you served as deputy, and knew Laura will get it done. I've heard that so many times. And then the best part was that you were no longer just the implementer, but you were the visionary. And the best part about you, besides your personal character and your professional expertise, is I think the background you have from your family and from your upbringing, but more particularly even from your interest in the arts at SCPA. Every single day, and many people can't say this about themselves, you pursue excellence, not expedience. And that's a leader. And that's what we have to try to live up to, that every day we try to pursue excellence the way you have done. And I'm thrilled for you, sad for us, but ready to carry on. Thank you. Love you very much.
And then I do have a prepared statement to read on behalf of Melanie Bates, who is actually out of the country, but wanted to make sure that she expressed her feelings as well. So I'll read on behalf of Melanie. I am so sad that Laura has announced her departure from the superintendency of CPS. I wish I could extend my greetings to you, Laura, in person, but I had committed to this trip a while ago. While we all experienced probably the most challenging year of all of our careers this school year, I want you to know that I am in awe of the way you steadfastly led and kept our students first and foremost. I heard you say over and over again, "Education is our mission." And that was what kept me focused. I wish you the best in your next endeavor and have no doubt of your success. You have served our students, staff, and community with intelligence, grace, and integrity. Personally, I will greatly miss your friendship and guidance. Thank you for all you have done for us. So we have presented this resolution for board consideration, and it's been seconded. We'd like to ask for a roll call, Ms. Hughes. We'd like to ask for a roll call. Ms. Hughes? Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to keep going. I can't read my notes with foggy glasses, but anyway, we'll keep going. Congratulations.
Thank you. If I could say thank you to the board for all of your support over these years, to the administration, and all the teachers and everyone out in schools doing the very hard work every day for our kids. I appreciate you, I appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate the experiences and the things that you've taught me over the years. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Messer, please present the following, the next resolution, risk reduction. Hold on, hold on, I did that wrong. Is that you, Mr. Morowski? I have Mr. Messer. Okay, go ahead. You do have the risk reduction. It's out of order, but you do have that. Go ahead.
This is the Board Policy 7430, to which I alluded in the presentation of the minutes. With stronger wording, at the behest of Ms. Bolton, I submit the resolution is written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hughes, please call the roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if I can get this right now. Mr. Messer, can you please present the resolution for board consideration? It's the Resolution in Recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, President Jones. I present a resolution approving, now this is the student subsidy, a resolution in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week, which was May 3rd through the 7th, 2021. Present the resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Hughes? Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers, please present the next resolution.
Yes, I present the resolution of recognition of school's Launch Hero Day, May 7th, 2021. I present this resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Hughes? Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton, please present the final resolution.
Thank you. I present a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy for reimbursement in lieu of transportation for 2020, 2021 school year. Submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Hughes? Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
All righty, Superintendent, do you have a report?
I do. I have some great things to celebrate as the PowerPoint slide is coming up.
Superintendent, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I apologize, but I think somehow I looked over the presentation of the retirement. So if we can just back it that of one second. Thank you.
All right. And Ms. Bates, this is an honor. I am going to read the retirements. First, from our certificated personnel, Carrie M. Cassinelli from Mount Washington, Michael H. Foles, Tiviet, Gloria J. Frost, John P. Parker, David W. Mailey, Fairview, Wadia Nashid, Walnut Hills, Candace Woodside, Tav High School, Denise Youngs, Tiviet. And our service personnel, Deborah Allen and Deborah Ludiger. We would like to thank all these people for their service to the district, and hopefully you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Morowski. My apologies, Superintendent. We're ready for the report.
Yes, so as we celebrate our employees, tonight I'd like to celebrate, next slide, please. Megan Johnson, who is an intervention specialist at Woodward Career. She is the Educator of the Year for the Dr. Lawrence C. Hawkins Educator of the Year Award. So now, this award is really special because in order to get the award, you have to be nominated by members of your peers. And so Megan has the honor of filling this seat this year in terms of the award winner. She will receive a personal check for $10,000 from Western Southern. And so Megan, thank you so much for all that you do for our kids, and congratulations. All right, next slide. So Cincinnati Public Schools, we are definitely on the move, so much so that Lieutenant Governor John Houston visited Hughes Dem High School, and he was here to talk about the three E's in terms of in-demand jobs, and that was on May the 3rd. And so we're very excited to show off the talent of our young people and all the work that they're doing towards graduating, and also really looking at those high-demand jobs for the future. And last but not least, I like to highlight Gamble Montessori Elementary. You can see that here, here are pictures of family members and volunteers coming to plant a garden for this school. And as we think about outdoor education, I thought I would highlight the wonderful work that's happening at this school. And if you're interested in volunteering some time to help plant gardens, I'm sure the principal would be ecstatic to have you join her. And that concludes my presentation, in addition to the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve the revised superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Hughes? Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hughes? Mrs. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Are there any inquiries and updates?
Yes, Mr. Morowski?
I just said an inquiry is kind of like the bigger version of my last inquiry, about mini-field trips to like rec centers. And so Gamble came up, and that's actually what inspired my inquiry, is all the interesting things they do in the fall when they go on their field trips, whether it's Florida or closer places. What is the latest and greatest on that?
Yes, so that's interesting that you asked, because I just did a audio recording today telling parents that we are allowing walking field trips to recreation centers for the remainder of the school year, as well as for summer scholars.
Correct.
So we're encouraging our kids to get outside and to take advantage of parks and recreation centers, and so it has resumed.
Thank you.
Any other inquiries, updates? Okay, great. Any assignments? Ms. Bolton?
Assignment to committee chairs regarding the budget discussions in their next two meetings, and then send to the administration.
Okay. Any other assignment? Mr. Morowski?
Yes, and Ms. Bolton, you will be happy to know that it will be on our policy agenda already. Yeah. So it's come to my attention a few times from different places. So I don't know if this is an assignment for the administration or the student achievement committee. I am fine with wherever. Regarding the sort of gendered nature of our graduation gowns, I don't know enough, I'm not a parent with a senior, so I don't get these emails. But it's come to me enough times, you know, half a dozen or more, that the note goes out, male, female gowns. I don't know if we offer a third option. Again, I don't know necessarily enough about the notices that go out, but if there is a way that we could make that more equitable gender-wise, that'd be awesome. So again, I don't know if that's an assignment to student achievement. I'm looking for help or administration. Anybody can help. Is that?
We can take and put on our agenda.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. And any other assignments? Great, all right. Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.